Welcome to the City of Highland Park's meeting of the zoning board of appeals for August 21st, 2025. Patrick, could you call the roll, please?
Yes. Member Weisberg?
Here.
Member Chase?
Here.
Member Trashansky?
Here.
Member Zaransky?
Here.
Vice Chair Yablon?
Here.
And Chair Bay absent. We have a quorum.
Excellent. Then I'm going to move on to approval of the minutes. Looking to approve the minutes of the July 17th, 2025 meeting. Has everyone had an opportunity to review the minutes?
Yes.
Excellent. Okay. Would anyone like to make a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the July 17th meeting.
I'll second.
Excellent. All those in favor of approving the minutes of July 17th, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Nope. Ayes have it. So, next order of business is business from the public that's not on the agenda. Do we have any business? Nope. Okay. Then we move on to old business. And 175 Prospect is asking for a continuance?
Yes, and it's to a date uncertain, so they'll have to renotice for their next available meeting. So, yeah, it's just kind of a info item, just to, that they're continuing to a future date, and we will be noticing for that date.
Do we need to make a motion and approve and do that type of thing?
Yeah, just make a motion that they're allowed to continue for a date uncertain.
Would someone like to make a motion?
I'll move that the 175 Prospect matter is continued to a date uncertain.
Can I get a second, please?
A second.
Excellent. Patrick, could you take a roll call vote, please?
Yes. Member Weisberg?
Aye.
Member Chase?
Aye.
Member Trashansky?
Aye.
Member Zaransky?
Yes.
And Vice Chair Yablon?
Aye.
Okay. So, well, we're rocking and rolling so far. Excellent. So then the next is new business. And the first is for VAR 2025-0052. And that is for the property located in the R4 district at 16 Red Oak Lane. And the applicant is Hal Dorkin on behalf of the owner, the PeaceKin Family Trust. And this is for, shed, I believe. Patrick, do you have a presentation?
I do. Okay, so 16 Red Oak Lane. Let's turn this on. There we go. Applicant Hal Dorkin, proposal is to encroach into the subdivision setback line. The property is zone R4. The existing home was built in the 1977, according to the Lake County assessor's office. And the requested relief is to encroach into the subdivision setback line of 40 feet by 29 feet for a shed. The existing property is a corner lot that is irregularly shaped, front slate cook and red oak lane. And here is just an aerial of the property. So in the plot of survey, there is this dotted line here that is the subdivision setback line. This is an added restriction on properties that is set up in the subdivision. There are no allowed encroachments for structures within this area, which is why this proposal is before you. So here are some property photos. This is just the front of the property. And the proposed shed will be located approximately here in the, in their kind of functional backyard. So again, the red is highlighting the subdivision setback line. The yellow is the proposed location of the shed. It's just a 10 by 10 shed. It'll be 11 feet from the property line and 10 feet from the shared property line with their neighbor. Typically, corner lots are allowed to encroach, or sheds are allowed to encroach into front yard setbacks. However, because of that subdivision setback line, that is why they're asking for a variation, because it is an added restriction on this property. And here's just kind of a look of what the shed will be. We didn't receive any other additional comments, no one from the public or additional city divisions. And just to review, the proposal is to encroach into the subdivision setback line of 40 feet by 29 feet for a shed. And the board should be using Chapter 150 standards of approval for this case. Do you have any questions?
Maybe just one. Is there any kind of restriction setback off of Lake Cook? Just to prevent sight lines and stuff? Is there any, do they have to weigh in?
So, there could be, well, there is more restriction here where it's the intersection. But that is well without of the visibility triangle area. Also, I guess I don't have a picture of it, but there is a, kind of like those, like subdivision brick wall, kind of like you're entering into the subdivision that is located here. And there's also fencing all around the property. So, the shed will be very hard to even notice from Lake Cook. But it is a front yard by the setback requirements.
I have a question. So there's that, what looks like a retaining wall? That is a, some sort of welcome, that looks like it's in violation of the setback line?
Yeah, it's here. That, I believe, was curated with, when the properties were subdivided. And that has been there for a very long time.
Is it on their property that subdivision said?
New.
No, is it on their property?
Oh, it appears to be, yes. Usually it's off of people's properties, but in this case, it is on their property.
Does anyone else have any further questions for staff? Okay, thank you. Would the applicant like to come and present their case?
Hi. Hi, good evening.
Before you start, I get to swear you in. Do you affirm that the testimony that you intend to provide this evening is true and complete, to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
Excellent, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Hal Dorkin, and my wife and I are the trustees of the PeaceKin Family Trust, which is just a living revocable trust we developed for estate plan purposes that we put our house into. My family moved up to Highland Park about eight or nine months ago from Chicago. We have a couple of young kids. Of course, we needed more space. So we came up to Highland Park, which is where my wife is actually originally from. And we are loving it so far, and we look forward to raising our kids here over the next couple, few decades. Our house is great, but there is one major drawback, which is a lack of storage space. The design of the house is what is called a raised ranch, which means it is two stories but no basement. And without a basement, that really does limit the amount of storage space we have. And we're the type of family that really enjoys outdoor activities. We like to go camping. We have some inflatable kayaks, and we like to take the Skokie Lagoons. Not to mention all of just the games and sports that we like to play, specifically in our fairly sizable backyard, as you can see. So, of course, this means a lot of stuff that we need to store. And with the lack of storage space in the house, you know, our solution was, as you might expect, build a shed. So we decided to build a shed. It's in the, well, the proposed location is the back corner, sorry, here we go. The back corner of the backyard right over here. So I purchased a shed from Home Depot, started going through the permitting process to get it built. And that's when I learned about the setback requirement that is restricting this specific area. And that's why I'm asking for a variance. That way, it could be built in what I perceive as the most logical place in the backyard to build it. And that's why I'm asking for a variance to alleviate this hardship. Now, to explain why this is a hardship, I'm just going to run through the eight standards that Highland Park has for a variance request. The first standard has to do with whether or not my property would yield a reasonable return should I end up selling my home. I'm not really relying on this standard, because we just moved in and we have no intention of selling anytime soon. But I will note that if, for whatever reason, we did have to sell, that the lack of storage space in the house would affect the prop, ultimately affect the property value. And if we were to build it within the setback line, where it's currently allowed according to the zoning code, that would, that would affect the value of the house, because it would interfere with the use and enjoyment of the backyard, which I'm going to get to in a moment. The second standard is that there is a unique circumstance creating the hardship if the zoning code is strictly adhered to. I recognize that this cannot be a mere inconvenience. It needs to be an unusual hardship, as the standard says. And that is the case here. As Mr. Hoffman explained, my lot is an unusual shape, and I have the unusual circumstance of Lake Cook Road, a main road bordering my backyard, basically creating a 40-foot setback where I can't build in a logical spot to build the shed. If I was to be forced to place the shed within the setback line, this would interfere with the use and enjoyment of the backyard. Yes, thank you for pulling up the plat. So there are basically two locations within setback line which would make sense. The first would be basically around this patio. And that's going to, that would interfere with a lot of the play area for sports and activities within the backyard. Not to mention the fact that would block sight lines if my wife and I were on the patio and our kids were playing. We wouldn't be able to see them in certain areas, and that would create a safety issue. The other possible location would be right here along the western fence next to my neighbor. Although that would really not be possible, because I would need to be 10 feet off the fence in the first place. So that's not really a real location I could put it. And it would also, even if I could put it there, one thing that you can't see in the plat is that there is a dirt area right here with shrubberies and a young tree. So there's really not a lot of space to put it, and that would block the walking path in and out of the backyard. So I think, I think there is a pretty clear showing of an unusual hardship in terms of where I can possibly place a shed. The third standard is that the particular physical surrounding shape or topographical condition of the subject property would result in a particular hardship upon the owner, as distinguished from a mere inconvenience, if the strict letter of the regulations were carried out or if the zoning code were to subject the property to some sort of discriminatory effect. Now, everything I just discussed for standard two, I think, applies here as well. I will just add that sheds are quite common features of people's backyards, but a strict application of the zoning code here would have a discriminatory effect on the property, because it would force either a location that interferes with the use and enjoyment of a shed or forego one altogether. The fourth standard is essentially that my family, the property owners, did not create this hardship, which we didn't. We just moved in a few months ago, and it was already like this. The fifth standard is that the proposed variation not material, be materially detrimental to the public welfare or interest to other properties or improvements in the neighborhood, which it won't, as Mr. Hoffman already indicated. Pretty much no one will be able to see the shed in the backyard. There's a tall wood fence separating Lake Cook and my backyard already. And the shed would at most peek, just slightly peek over it. Really, the only people that will be able to see it are my guests and my next door neighbor. The sixth standard is that the proposed variation not impair or inadequate supply of light and air to adjacent properties. As you probably, as you might have noticed in the picture previously, that is a very tree-lined area. The shed would actually go next to a tall tree that already shades the area. Also in the standard is that the variation would not substantially increase congestion in the public streets, which I think needless to say, a shed in my backyard would have no effect there. Whether it would, that it not increase the fire danger, and a shed in my backyard would not be any more of a fire hazard than anyone else's shed in their backyards. Or endanger the public safety or substantially diminish or impair the property values in the neighborhood, which I frankly can't imagine how that would be possible with a shed in this location. The seventh standard is that the proposed variation not alter the essential character of the neighborhood, which I do not believe it would. As I said before, the only people who'd even see this shed would be basically my guests and my next door neighbor. And finally, the eighth standard is that the proposed variation is in harmony with the spirit and intent of the zoning code. And this standard is actually one I find most interesting in this case, because not only, as I've explained, would a variation, granting the variation be in harmony in spirit with the zoning code, but not granting it would actually not be in harmony in spirit with the zoning code. Because my understanding of this setback requirement is basically you can't build structures in your front yard. You know, because, or you're being sightly, that would affect the property values. And I agree that me building a shed in my front yard would be unsightly and probably shouldn't be allowed. But fortunately, that's not what I'm asking. I'm asking it go in the backyard in the most out of the way spot I was able to locate. But if I was forced to build the shed within the setback line, as I've already explained, that would be in the middle of my backyard, which would aesthetically affect the value of the property. It would be a negative aesthetic on the property, which would not be in harmony with the spirit of the setback requirement, which is to protect the aesthetics of the properties of the subdivision. So, just to wrap up, as you can see, this request for a variation to build a shed in my backyard easily meets all the criteria for a zoning variation. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions?
Does the board have any questions? No, we're good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here to speak on this matter? Nope. Okay. Then I'm going to ask the board. What are your thoughts? And I will start with Member Weisberg.
Yeah, I really appreciate the petitioner going step by step here through the standards, because, you know, when I first think about it, can a shed really have an unusual hardship, right? But I think you made a great case, and yeah, I believe it meets the standards, and I would move to approve.
Member Chase?
I really don't have anything to add. I appreciated going through the standards. And I do think if voting, I would be, it meets the standard.
Member Zaransky?
I don't either have much to add. I really enjoyed your presentation. I thought it was phenomenal. And you clearly meet the standards, and I think it's a good plan.
Member Trashansky?
Yeah, you walked us through the, through the standards in great detail. I don't really have anything to add before it.
Excellent. I too agree with my fellow board members, and I thank you for an excellent presentation. And I should ask, we have our student council representative. Do you have any questions or any thoughts?
I would mostly agree with everyone. It was a great presentation. Went through all the points. Yeah, I like how you touched on why it's needed and how you kind of went into detail about how there's not much storage in the house and why I need extra space for it. So, yeah, definitely, great presentation.
Thank you. So it seems like we are in a place, is someone willing to make a motion to approve the?
Members Zaransky will make a motion to approve the order as drafted.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. So, Patrick, at your convenience, could we get a roll call vote, please?
Yes. Member Weisberg?
Aye.
Member Chase?
Aye.
Member Trashansky?
Aye.
Member Zaransky?
Aye.
And Vice Chair Yablon?
Aye.
Congratulations, and thank you again for an excellent presentation.
Thank you for your consideration. I really appreciate it.
So, the next order of business is for VAR 2025-0053. And it's for the property located in the R6 district at 2892 Summit Avenue. The petitioners and owners are David and Jody Guthrie. I was told no relation. And they're looking to encroach into the required side yard setback. Patrick, do you have a presentation for us?
So, 2892 Summit Avenue. Applicant David and Jody Guthrie. The proposal is a side yard encroachment. Property is located in the R6 zoning district, and the existing home was built in 1957, according to Lake County assessor, Lake County assessor's office. Requested relief is to encroach into the required side yard setback of 8.85 feet by 2.46 feet for a two car garage addition along the northern property line. This property is just a basic interior lot along Summit Avenue. Here is the aerial of the neighborhood. This is the plot of survey. This is just the driveway where the proposed garage will be located and the existing home of the property. So, the front of the property here, and where the car is currently parked, is the location of the new proposed garage. There will be other additions associated with this project as well, but all of those meet the zoning setbacks. And here's just another look at it of how the proximity to the other property. And this is a photo from the backyard, looking towards Summit Ave. So, the blue is the current home with their porch, and the yellow is the proposed work. They are wanting to do a two car garage here with a 20 foot width, which is pretty standard width with a two car garage in Highland Park. And with it being connected to the home here, it will encroach slightly into the northern side yard setback. It will be 6.39 feet away from this property line, and will be encroaching 2.46 into the setback. It's the sliver here, about 72 square feet of space. Here are some proposed elevations. This is the new garage addition, and this is from the back. This is a new addition. Again, this addition is compliant with the setback requirements. So, we had no additional comments from city divisions or from the public on this matter. And the requested relief again is to encroach into the required side yard setback of 8.85 feet by 2.46 feet for a two car garage addition along the northern side yard. The board should be using Chapter 150 standards of approval. And do you have any questions?
Does the board have any questions for Patrick? And actually, I do, everything is okay with the bulk with all that. We're just looking at the little strip.
Yep, that's the only request.
Got it. Okay, thank you. With that being said? Oh, jumping up. I like it. Hell is a tough act to follow. Yeah, the bar is high. I'm just going to swear you in, if that's okay? Do you affirm that the testimony that you intend to provide this evening is true and complete, to the best of your knowledge? It is. Okay, thank you.
My name is Beth De Baker. I'm the architect on the project. My clients are here tonight, Jody and David. Couple things I wanted to note, and I'm happy to walk through the standards as well. We do remain 6.39 feet away from the side yard. There's a minimum six foot, so we're not encroaching on the absolute minimum. What we are encroaching on is the combined minimum. So we do want to point out there are maintaining that six feet. David and Jody have lived in the house for 35 years without a garage. They did not create this hardship, obviously, but they really want to stay in the house. And as they get older, aging in place is really important to their lifestyle and being able to park inside and not having to deal with the snow and all the elements outside. It is important to note, we did look at some other solutions. You will see that there's some more open space in the front yard. There's also a really nice tree there that we would not like to tear down. So that, we did look at a solution where the garage kind of came in a little bit closer to the south side to get out of the side yard setback. But it would have required removing this tree and making a really this tree and making a really narrow pathway to the front door. As you can see, the front door is a side entry, so it would have kind of created this narrow corridor and required removing the tree, really bringing the garage all the way in front of the existing house. So, that's the sort of design thought process that we did go through, you know, iterations of drawings to look at these options, and ultimately felt that the request for a variation was reasonable given the existing conditions. We set the garage at a 20-foot interior dimension, that was a reasonable minimum standard for a two-car garage. Happy to walk through the specifics of the standards, that seemed to be helpful. Ah, thank you. I have my phone, that's helpful. The property in question cannot yield a reasonable return if permitted to be used only under the conditions allowed. I will say that the reason that the Guthries are undertaking this project is so that they can stay in the house for the foreseeable future. Being a two-driver family, it is important to them to be able to park two cars in the garage. Obviously, it's a big investment to add on to the house in this way, so building a garage that doesn't suit all the needs doesn't make a lot of sense. So, reasonable return, I think this is a reasonable request for a considerable return on the house. The plight of the petitioner, hardship with that, which would result from the strict interpretation regulations of the zoning code, is due to unique circumstances, and the proposed variation will not merely service convenience to the petitioner, but will alleviate some demonstrable and unusual hardship, which is not generally applicable to properties within the same zoning district. I will be honest with you guys, I have requested this variation on another property on the street before, so it doesn't seem like it's a totally unusual thing, but it is a hardship in how this neighborhood was developed, that a lot of these sideyards are very narrow. And it's a, you know, reasonable expectation in 2025 that a two-car garage is sort of a standard for the community of Highland Park. Particular physical surroundings shape or topographical condition of the subject property result in particular hardship, I think we've covered that with the existing conditions. The Guthries did not create this hardship, obviously, the house was built in 1957, as was most of the neighborhood, a lot of the houses are very similar. It will not be materially detrimental to public welfare or interest in neighboring properties. On the contrary, I think this will only serve to benefit the community, the street, and improve the property values overall. The proposed variation will not impair adequate supply of light and air. A lot of these houses are single-story houses, we're not, you know, we're keeping within the height of the existing house, and certainly is not gonna impede on the air and light on the adjacent properties. The proposed variation will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood, I think we've done a good job of integrating the new garage with the existing architecture of the house, same roof pitches, following the gable design on both the garage space and on the back of the house, so that everything is integrated and looks purposeful and like it was always meant to be that way. And the proposed variation is in harmony with the spirit and intent of the zoning code. As I mentioned at the top, we are still keeping to the minimum six-foot standard, so I think it will feel very much like it was, you know, could have been built originally in this way, and isn't encroaching on that six-foot line.
Thank you. Does the board have any questions?
Did you talk to the neighbors that it is closest to, if they're okay with it, or do we know that?
So, the property immediately to the north recently changed hands, I think you guys were able to talk with the new owners or meet them?
They have the house for rent.
Yeah.
They haven't even been there for months, it's been empty. I think the notices were sent to whoever was the owner on record?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, if you'd like to speak, I would love to hear from you, but I need you to be sworn in.
Sorry.
So, please, please approach, be sworn in, and then we'd love to hear...
My mom just goes.
No, it's okay.
Sure, go ahead.
Okay. If you could state your name?
Jody Guthrie.
Excellent. Do you affirm that the testimony that you intend to provide this evening is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
Excellent.
I have talked to almost everybody around us, except for one kiddy-cornered person, and everybody said, wow, we can't believe you've lived without a garage for all the time we've lived here. But the people next door sold the house in, I don't know, like, February?
I was gonna say, it was over the winter, yeah.
Yeah, it was in the winter, and the people who lived there knew we wanted to build a garage, and then I found out they were moving to Deerfield. And we have not met the people who bought the house, they had people working on it for a really long time, and we thought they were fixing it because they were gonna move in, and they never moved in, and it's been for rent for months.
Okay, so a minimum, no one's objected, right?
No one's objected.
And their garage is on that side as well, so it's...
And they have no windows on that side of the house at all, that we would do the garage on?
Oh, their garage on the other side?
Yeah, their garage is on the other side.
But no windows on the side?
Yeah, they don't have any windows on that side at all. So, no, no objections.
Okay, thank you. Any other board members have questions?
I'm just curious, so...
And who's your question for?
Oh, to the architect, this doesn't affect the driveway, does it? Where the garage is going?
The driveway will be, like, a little bit wider at the apron here, so that we can get into, but the curb cut and the main length of the driveway will be the same.
Okay.
We'll just kind of swoop out there, so you can utilize both cars there.
Okay, good. Anyone else have any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. And is there anyone else here from the public to speak about this case? Nope, great. I'm gonna jump in then and say, Member Zeransky, what are your thoughts?
I think it's a good plan, I think you meet the standards, I think that you're doing all this work to preserve another home, and I think that the two-car garage is necessary, and I would approve the variation.
Member Zeransky.
Trushinsky.
Trushinsky, sorry. I'm saying it to the other, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I don't have very much else to add, I think all the standards are met, I think it's a small ask, as well, you're only asking for a two-car garage, you could have asked for a three, I guess. So, yeah, I'm for it.
Member Chase.
I think, I have nothing to add, I too, actually, I don't have a garage, but it's hard to live without a garage.
Okay, Member Weisberg?
I agree with what everyone said, and look to approve.
Excellent. I personally believe the standards have been met, and I appreciate you walking us through them, as well as saying why it couldn't be placed elsewhere and protecting the trees, since that's part of this board's responsibility as well, it's greatly appreciated. I would also put out there that I, I'm using the word appreciate a lot, but that you asked for a 20-foot garage, not a 25-foot, or a, as someone said, a three-car garage, so I appreciate the reasonableness of the ask as well, and I would vote also in favor to approve from our student council.
Yeah, I mean, I definitely think it's a reasonable ask, I think living without a garage for 35 years is a very long time, but yeah, I definitely think it's reasonable, so, got it.
Okay, thank you. With that, would anyone like to make a motion?
I will, Members Zeransky will make a motion to approve the order as drafted.
Excellent. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
So, second by Member Chase, and if we can go for a roll call vote, please?
Member Weisberg?
Aye.
Member Chase?
Aye.
Member Trushinsky?
Aye.
Member Zeransky?
Aye.
And Vice Jerry Yablon?
Aye.
Great.
Congratulations, and thank you for a second wonderful presentation.
The life of Bartlet says it's the largest birch tree in my house.
Wow.
Way too close to the house, I might add.
Amazing, thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you for thinking of the tree. Yeah.
We can just take, you can just take a minute.
Okay, we're just gonna take a little pause, right, you said, pause?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, we're just gonna take a little pause for one second. That's just how important you are.
I guess.
War restored, okay. The next order of new business is for VAR 2025-00054. The property is in the R5 zoning district, located at 841 Thackeray, and the appulant is Stephen Jacobs. On behalf of the owner of 841 Thackeray Drive, which is 841T LLC, and they are looking to exceed the maximum allowable fence height, and to place that fence within a subdivision setback line. Patrick.
So, 841 Thackeray Drive, applicant Stephen Jacobs, on behalf of 841T LLC. Again, we're dealing with subdivision setback lines for this case, as well as fence height. The property is in the R4 zoning district, the existing home was built in 1957, and the requested relief is to encroach into the required subdivision setback line of 40 feet for an additional section of fencing at a height of both four feet and six feet, and to exceed the maximum allowable fence height of four feet while within the required front yard by two feet, for a total of six feet. So here's the property, again, it is a interestingly shaped corner lot with the curvature of the roads, having multiple frontages. And here is a aerial of that property. So again, this property has subdivision setback lines on it, that's the dotted lines here of 40 feet, because of the multiple frontages, it has multiple requirements on this. If it was more of a typical interior lot, it would just be on the frontage area. Here are the property photos, this is standing on Thackeray Drive, you can see that there's kind of a hill here, which I will switch to here, which is where these pictures are from. There is an existing fence, six-foot fence line on kind of the rear of the property, and this is just on the other side of these bushes here, just showing kind of the, going behind the backyard, and where the fence will be going across this hill here. So, in red is the subdivision building lines. This property has already been approved, which I will speak on the next slide, but it's already been approved for this fence in the past, that it already exists, they would just like to expand upon that fence. Currently, it is located here, they're just gonna shift it slightly south, just to go behind the Arbore Viti, and then they're going, so this segment will be six feet, they'll be adding this six-foot segment here, and then they'll be adding four feet here to go to the house to enclose the backyard. Because this is just an expansion of the use within the subdivision building line, they have to ask for a variation in order to place that, and also, since this fence is six feet tall, and it's an expansion of that, that's why they have to ask for a fence height for this segment here as well. So that's where you have the two standards. So, speaking on the previously approved, in 1978, the previous owner was approved to build this segment of fence here, and then they did the plantings of Arbore Viti, and that's what they chose to put forward, and they were approved. So, the applicant is now wishing to expand a little bit, just to enclose the backyard. We receive no additional comments from city staff or from the public, and again, this is two points to encroach into the required subdivision setback of 40 feet for the six-foot and four-foot fence segments, as well as to exceed the maximum allowable height of four feet while within the required front yard for a six-foot fence. The board should be using both the Chapter 150 and 173, specifically, the 150 is for the subdivision setback line, and the, and then the fence height portion is the 173 aspect. So, do you have any questions on this case?
The fence is currently not closed, just like...
Yeah, this is it. It's just this section here, I'll show you, so that's where it ends. It ends at the tree line, and that's it.
Okay.
I read the transcript, I think it was just to block headlights going into their backyard.
And so, even though where the six-foot fence is going is kind of along the side of their house, even though that's technically front yard because of this...
Yes, that's correct, since it's adjacent public right-of-way, that is a front yard requirement through zoning, and that's why they're no, they can't have a fence higher than four feet without asking for a variation, and that's also kind of why they have the 40-foot subdivision building line, because in the subdivision, it carries it along all the frontages, and since this property just has a lot of frontage, they have more restriction.
I'm gonna keep asking questions, I apologize. So it's mostly six feet that we're approving, and then a small gate that's a four-foot gate?
Yes, so this portion here is the six feet, that is the part that is adjacent to the right-of-way, and then this portion here is the four-foot area. I think the gate will be here, but this is a four-foot fence for this portion.
We're mostly approving four feet, just a small section of six foot.
Yeah, the new portion of six foot is just here, they're just like rotating it slightly, just so they can tuck it behind the trees, because it currently just runs into the trees. So, yeah, it's mostly just this portion here is the expansion.
Need a variation for four foot also?
Yeah, because of the subdivision setback lines. If it was, if that did not exist, they could do a four-foot fence.
Does anyone else have questions?
Patrick? I have a quick, the front of the house is on Thackeray, the front door faces Thackeray?
That's correct.
So...
Here, I'll go to the, so, yeah, this is the front door, this is Thackeray, and then that's where the curve, so the fence will be in this section of the house.
So because of the curve of Thackeray, they have, if it were a rectangular lot, it would, that would be considered the side yard? It's still considered the side yard?
If it was a square, it would just be a typical corner, it would still carry the front yard requirement, because it would be adjacent to the front.
Because it's a corner lot?
Yes.
Anyone else for staff? Okay, thank you. Is there someone from the audience to speak? Thank you.
Hi, my name's Daniel Jacobs.
Excellent, thank you. And do you affirm that the testimony that you intend to provide this evening is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
Thank you.
So, thank you, Patrick, very nice introduction and summary of what we're trying to do. My wife, Jessie, and I moved into my grandmother's house, and have been there for about five years. It's always been our goal to have a fenced-in backyard, both for our dog, who likes to wander around, he's a hound, and for our future children that we're planning to have. As you've seen, the fence just kind of stops short, and so the dog can get out either way of the house, and so we would like to close that in. The fence that is there today is also at the end of its existing life. The boards are falling apart, and so there's big gaps in the fence that we'd like to, so we wanted to replace the whole thing, and while replacing the entire thing, we wanted to, you know, enclose the backyard for both privacy and safety for our dog, to keep him on our property, and also for the headlights, if you saw kind of from the slope of the property, the fence is much higher than where the deck and the back of the house is. Yeah, that slope kind of continues all throughout the property, and so cars driving on Carlisle back, the headlights kind of shine right through. And so with the gaps forming in the fence, I'm seeing more and more headlights through my windows at night. So, yeah, anyways, just trying to alleviate the hardship of not being able to have safety for my dog, trying to keep him in the yard, as well as for our future family, you know, really trying to improve what's there. Nothing too crazy, as we said, the extension of six feet is really only, you know, I don't wanna guess, but it's... want to guess, but it's not much of the project. We're trying to, again, alter the angle of that small section of fence to tuck behind the arborvitae, so it will be actually further from the street and less visible. The arborvitae provide really good privacy, and then it will just take a turn and head towards the garage, and that will be a much shorter four-foot section, again, just to keep everybody inside the yard. So yeah, anyways, if I can just cover the standards rather quickly. Again, this fence was built back in the 70s, so nothing that my wife or I did or put together. I don't think it's going to block light or air to nearby properties. The fence is already there. We're really just adding a short section. The four-foot fence, I don't think is going to block air or light to anybody, but maybe a small patch of my own grass. And yeah, we're just trying to, I would say it is also following the character of the neighborhood. I'd say many of the adjacent lots have the exact same kind of fencing, albeit not within that 40-foot setback, but because of how our corner lot is and having so many frontages, obviously makes it very difficult to basically have what many of my neighbors have, which is just a closed-in backyard. So, yeah, that's, I think, what we're looking for. If I can answer any questions.
Does the board have any questions?
Just, and I know you said this already, but I was trying to understand, so the, to, is this face, is this, is north up on this?
Yes.
So the north fence is being replaced, and that's already there?
Mm-hmm.
Then the going, going southeast, you're canting it to line up with the arborvitae, and that's a six-foot fence?
Correct.
And then when it turns the corner to head towards the corner of the garage, that's a four-foot fence?
Correct. Yeah, I know it says six foot both, on both angles, but after talking with Patrick, the, where it makes that turn will turn into a four-foot fence, which is, yeah.
But the problem there is that it's in the setback line.
Any other questions? Member Chase, do you have more questions?
No, I think that's it.
Okay. Anyone else? No? Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate your time. Thank you.
Okay. Member Chase, we'll start with you.
It makes, I mean, I understand, I've done a problem, we already have a six-foot fence back there, so, and I understand canting the fence away from the street, there's already mostly fence there. The issue is, is, I'm just trying to figure out, as I know we don't like to fence in frontage, and I guess in my mind, I'm trying to figure out, maybe the board can help me, if that's, if that's frontage or if that's sideage?
If it's frontage, we allow four-foot fences.
Okay, oh, right, right.
So...
So the issue is not where it is, the issue is the violation of setback, which I know I've said three times.
Yes.
But you know, I don't see another way to achieve what I think is a reasonable goal, which is fencing in a backyard. So I, unless, I don't see another way to do it. I think, I think the ask is reasonable to fence in the backyard, and I don't see another way to do it, so I'd be inclined to approve.
Okay. Members Zeransky?
I would agree. I think it's a, it's a reasonable ask, and it makes sense to want to, you know, fence in your functional backyard, if I have a better word. And I think your presentation was good, and I would support your application.
Okay. Member Weisberg?
Yeah, I think what Member Chase said is exactly what I was going through in my head, and I think she said it a lot better than I could have gotten out into words, so I too would be inclined to approve.
Okay. Member Trzansky?
I don't have much to add. I think the standards have been met, and I'd approve it.
Okay. Student Council?
Um, yeah, I agree with everyone. I think it's very reasonable, especially for the safety of your dog and future kids, and also for the safety of the rest of the neighborhood in case your dog might get out and, you know, possibly cause something to happen, but yeah, I definitely, I definitely think it's reasonable.
Okay. I, I too agree with the rest of the board and think it's a very reasonable request. I appreciate that along the house line that you went for a four-foot fence that made it in keeping with what we allow in Highland Park in terms of traditional front yard fences, and I understand with the setback issue, it causes a hardship. So I understand and believe all the standards have been met for both, both section, 173 and our traditional standards for granting a variation as well. So I too would be inclined to...
Do they have to be both?
Yeah.
Okay.
Sorry. Yeah, thank you. So...
Yeah, all good.
Cool.
Okay. So with that in mind, do I hear a motion?
Member Weisberg makes a motion to draft VAR, or to approve VAR 2025-00054 as drafted.
Excellent. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
That's Member Trzansky with a second. So Patrick, can we do a roll call vote, please?
Member Weisberg?
Aye.
Member Chase?
Aye.
Member Trzansky?
Aye.
Member Zeransky?
Aye.
Vice Chair Yablon?
Aye.
So congratulations, and thank you for a good presentation. It makes our jobs a lot easier, so thank you.
Yeah, for sure. Thank you. You're done. We also need to inform the former one-twelve president.
I think it's a seven.
Spin this round.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay. So, do we have a staff report?
Uh, no. I know that we have a new member that will be joining September 15th. That's when they are appointed, but beyond that, I do not have any additional items.
Okay. Anything?
Is it at the next meeting? The 15th is scheduled?
Uh, no, we don't have anything scheduled for September 4th.
Ooh. Sorry, got a little shoulder for that one. Yay. Okay, so I guess we're back, September 15th. Okay, does anyone?
Cost too much both, though.
Would anyone like to make a motion to end the meeting?
I'll move to adjourn. Member Chase?
Do I have a second?
Second.
Member Trzansky seconds? So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Yep. Okay. Yep.
Chapter.
Who did screw up one?